There we go. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21st, 2014, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. A roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Spring.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have in front of us this evening a form of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the meeting agenda. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. Next, we have a consent agenda with numerous items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to remove items four C and items four K, L, and M, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? With the exception of items four C, K, L, and M, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exceptions noted. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. Four C is the Resolution 2014-13, which is dealing with the request from staff for a resolution from council on a variance from the state aid standards for West 54th Street. Member Bennett.
Yes, thank you. I have asked it to be removed and spoken with Mr. Milner about tabling this or continuing it to a date certain. The variance applications are not due at the state until March. NINDOT has been notified that we'll be seeking a variance, but in the meantime, I would appreciate some clarity on whether or not the Federal Highway Administration is going to permit these advisory bike lanes, which have been experimented with here and in other communities, whether or not it intends to allow those experiments or the use of those devices to continue after the end of 2014. And I understand Mr. Milner has been trying to get that clarification, and we'll turn to him for elaboration.
Thank you.
Yes, the variance committee is, they meet in March, so we'd have to come to you sometime in February, probably the second meeting in February, but we can definitely try to pull, get some more data from FHWA to rewrite the council report and give you some more background information on how the advisory lanes are working in other communities.
And I asked that the request to experiment, which Edina entered into with FHWA, that that be distributed to council meetings members today, because it explains that we've agreed that we will stop the use of them, that we will remove them after the experiment ends at the end of 2014 unless it has been decided that they will be allowed to go forward, that they're going to be entered into a manual. But that's the end of the experiment period in this community.
All right. Member Bennett, would you like to move that this matter be tabled until the 17th of February?
Yes, I would.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth of February.
Is it the eighteenth?
Yes.
It is. The eighteenth.
Yes, you're right. Looking at Monday, 18th of February. We have a motion. Do we have a second to table this matter until the 18th of February?
I'll second it.
All right. We got a motion and a second to table Resolution 2014-13 until February 18th, 2014. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carried. And we'll look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Milner. Are you working with the FHA office in Minneapolis?
Correct.
All right.
With phone calls to the EC office.
Okay. If you need any extra assistance, I think both Manager Neil and I know some of the FHA people that I've worked with at the TAB on a regular basis, so if you, if things aren't moving quite as quickly as you need to move, let us know.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
See if we can, see if we can help you at all. All right. Then item K, and I think your K, L, and M, those are related matters. Did you want to handle them all in one discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have just a couple of questions for Director Katry. Director Katry, it appears that the first item, which is a request for purchase for site planning, landscape architecture, and civil engineering for Pamela Park renovation project is $147,890. Is that correct? And then item L is contract for architectural services for Pamela Park Shelter Building for $87,552.
Actually, Member Bennett, item L is the architectural services for the Shelter Building for $46,750.
Thank you. And then item M is for $87,552, is that correct?
Yes, Member Bennett.
Okay. So the total of those three items that I got was $282,192. I had them transposed, but the same values. And then I note that the staff report for each item states that those are not within budget. Is that correct?
That is correct, because they are not included in the, in the city's budget.
Okay. And they also reference work with Mark Ruff at Ailer's regarding financing, but a funding source has not yet been identified or secured for these projects. Is that correct?
Yes, Member Bennett, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
A little, I remember Director Katry maybe had may have one question here. On the item four M, which has a map of the Pamela Park with all the potential improvements in the existing facilities, is the recreational trail included in the work that we're going to be doing? I couldn't see it on the map. Maybe I wasn't looking carefully enough, or it was too thin a line.
Yes, Mayor Hovland, it is. We do intend to do some trail work in the park as part of the Pamela renovation plan.
Okay.
My question, excuse me, Mayor, may I speak?
Yeah.
My question to you is, will that trail be one that is circular so you can actually go around it?
Member Swenson, honestly, we have not decided completely yet what the trail route will be. I do intend to involve some neighbors in that conversation. Right now, the plan, as was proposed in October, did not include a circular path all of the, all the way around the park.
I screwed up on my motion then. Because that's, I guess, what was in my brain, was that if you were there, you could do a loop or two loops or three loops and know how long it was. And, you know, that's what we built down on Hanson at that park and, you know, what we have today out by Lake Cornelia and what we have at Bredesen, so.
Did we do that in the countryside?
We did that in the countryside, too. So I guess, I guess we've always built loops. I should have not assumed that. That was foolish of me, but.
Well, can I say something?
Absolutely.
What's pictured here is the Park Master Plan from 2009. And there is, there is work that's going to be done at Pamela Park. When I saw this, I didn't think it was what was going to happen at Pamela Park. It's, it's what the master plan currently is, and we still have to see what the plan is going to look like. So that's, I think, what I thought we were voting on here, is moving forward to get a plan. So that's, and then hoping, of course, that, that the trail will have better access to the neighborhoods, particularly on the south, and then, and then, as you say, have it be a loop.
That is correct, Member Brindle. We do have some work to do with the watershed district yet in order to, to approve any final trail plans, but access to the park and a walking path all the way around the park would certainly be a priority.
Thank you for speaking to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I want to, I would like to add some additional context to the question that Councilmember Bennett asked about, do we have a financing source identified for, for these costs? I think it's true that, that we don't have a specific fund established yet to fund these particular costs that we're incurring, but the evening that the council gave its, its approval to go forward with this Sportsdome project, we did explain to you that it would be a debt financing vehicle of some kind. It was going to be typically some kind of lease revenue bond issue through, probably through our HRA, and that there was, is probably going to be some kind of tax levy backup to the, to, to support the debt issue, depending on what the operating revenues were likely to be when the project was completed. So we haven't done that debt issue yet, but we are working with Ailer's to kind of clarify how much, what is our budget, and when's the right time to go to the market for that.
And the property tax levy that the council voted on in December, I did see in those documents that explained clearly that it did not include any levy for this.
You are correct.
But there will at some point then be a vote on what amounts to an additional property tax to pay for these improvements.
Yeah. Councilmember Bennett, members of the council, that's correct.
All right, very good. Member Bennett, you want to move K, L, and M?
I don't think I can, because I'm going to vote against them.
I'll move K, L, and M.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay.
Nay.
Carried. All right. We are through the consent agenda, and the next portion of the agenda involves special recognitions and presentations, and we have a gentleman, gentleman with us tonight that we haven't seen for a while, so it's nice to have him here from the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, Mr. Kevin Bogalke. Mr. Bogalke, welcome.
It'll be on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here again before you. What I'd like to do this evening is provide you an update and summary and a status update, essentially where we're at in terms of the planning for the Nine Mile Creek Stream Restoration Project. Can I just use Jennifer? Who's this? Which? Oh, there we go. I got it. Okay. A number of years ago, probably 2010, 2011, the city of Edina had petitioned the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District for, for a number of projects, one of which was a stream restoration project. And the reason for that is a number of conditions that the creek is in, a fairly unstable or unstable condition in various reaches. In some cases, there's significant erosion, storm pipe outfalls that are into the creek that are exposed, property damage and loss, and, and like I said, storm sewer underneath trees and causing additional bank erosion. But what we wanted to do is also look at, is this the condition throughout the whole city, Nine Mile Creek, as it flows through the city, or are we also, do we have areas that are in, in a fairly stable condition? And that's exactly what we found. It's not necessary, as we maybe had initially anticipated when we took on the project, that we would need to do a whole-scale stream sort of re-meandering stabilization project. It's more intermittent, pieces here and there, different reaches, and through our initial assessment, what we've discovered is that we're able to break the number of miles through, that Nine Mile Creek flows through the city into essentially 15 or 16 smaller reaches, so it's not a uniform contiguous project where we'll be working on every reach and every stretch of the creek from where it flows into the city under 169 to where it leaves the city into Bloomington down by Highway 10494. One of the things that we looked at is historic air photos and historic assessments that we have, and while this is a little bit small, you'll get a pretty good sense going back to 1937, about every 10 years where the creek has moved and meandered over the course of 60, 70 years. As you can see, while it stayed relatively in a general vicinity, and we haven't had any major changes in the course or the flow, there's certainly some shifting and, and movement within the creek corridor and within its floodplain that, and we actually use this information to try to get a sense in those areas that we do need to do stabilization restoration, restoration work on. What's the, what's the historic natural condition of Nine Mile Creek so that we can sort of replicate that in our restoration design efforts? We also looked at the vegetation community and the quality of that vegetation throughout the creek corridor, and we have a pretty mixed bag of healthy vegetative communities and maybe not some not-so-healthy, where we have a higher diversity and abundance of invasive species in certain areas. But certainly, given the relatively disturbed nature of Nine Mile Creek watershed, we're about 95% built out and in an urban setting, you know, there's still some relatively healthy vegetative communities that we can take advantage of in our restoration efforts. So again, going back, here's the 15 reaches that we're looking at, and so what I want to share with some of the techniques that we're, that we're using to address some of these issues. Some of those techniques and uniformly, the approach that we take is trying to use environmentally friendly, natural approaches, biological engineering approaches, where we're using natural materials to help stabilize the stream bank and the channel itself. So in some cases, we'll be using rock veins, where we have boulders and rocks that extend perpendicular upstream into the creek channel, and as in the center graphic, you can see the planned section rendering, as the water flows over those rock veins, the water, the rocks redirect the energy and the velocity of the water back into the center of the channel. So by having those rock veins angled facing upstream, we're able to take the energy and the erosive forces of the creek and divert it back into the center of the channel and away from the areas that are maybe experiencing some erosion right now. In a similar sense, we use, are also proposing to use cross veins or constructed riffles. And in this case, you're essentially creating a horseshoe shape or a V with, with the point of the V or the rounded end of the horseshoe facing, again, facing upstream. This works somewhat as of a grade control in flatter reaches, so we can get some grade and stepping down. It also helps in, in the creation of habitat with the created riffles. But again, it's diverting the energy and the, the erosive forces of the creek back into the center of the channel. In some cases, we'll need to use sort of the, the old standby riprap, hard armoring toe protection, and these are in areas where maybe we don't have a whole lot of room to work, to either cut the bank back a little bit and, and reslope and get a more gradual slope, or maybe it's, it's along a roadway or a highway where we want to have a harder armor and a harder edge on, on that stream bank to prevent it from eroding further towards that particular land, land feature. Where we don't need to use hard armoring riprap, we use root wads, where we essentially, essentially take the exposed root ball of dead and/or fallen trees, have the, the root ball in, facing the creek. The trunk is buried back into the stream bank, and the root essentially, the root mass essentially provides that bank protection, blocking the force of the energy off of the exposed soil. But this also provides a nice habitat where it does get some scouring underneath that root ball, so that for macroinvertebrates, aquatic insects, for fish, wood duck habitat that helps accentuate the natural feature of what's, what you may find in, in the creek in terms of woody debris and, and habitat structure, while also providing bank protection. In some cases, maybe we can get by a simple vegetation management, where maybe mowing practices have prevented native plants from, to continuing to grow up. By using, extending a natural native buffer, we're able to, that root structure in those native plants is able to provide a stable enough structure to, and blank, or interweaving within the soil to hold the soil in its place, rather so that we don't have to have as much hard armoring or some of the bioengineering techniques. And certainly where we have culverts and storm sewer inlets going into the creek, we'll, you know, use hard armoring and riprap to help stabilize that. If there's flared sections that are, that are falling off or that have come off, we'll add new flared sections. Maybe it's a matter of cutting the pipe back a little bit so it's not as close to the creek, and then adding some rock as, as the outfall to help protect that. And in some cases, where we do have severe bank erosion, we're using what's called a vegetated reinforced slope stabilization. Essentially, what we're doing is, in this case, we're cutting that bank down and rebuilding the bank using rock and soil. You create a, a bench of soil and rock, take erosion control blanket, fold that over, plant willow, dogwood, other live stakes, create another bench, fold the erosion control blanket over, so you're essentially stepping that stream bank back, and, but when it's grown up, it becomes a natural vegetated new, new stream bank condition. This is a technique that we employed with Hopkins Stream Bank Restoration Project along Westbrook Way, and it, it looks really, really nice right now, and it's doing a good job of protecting Westbrook. This is a nice alternative where you are, instead of using hard armoring and, and rock or using sheet pile to try to provide a level of protection, this, this approach does a really nice job. So just to give you a sense of some of the plans, I'm not going to go through all 15 sections, but I want to give you a sense or an idea of some of the possible scenarios of what we're looking at. This is along Gleason Avenue as, or Gleason Road, excuse me, as the creek flows south into Bredesen Park. Currently, it's the yellowish section is a very straight section, and we're looking at the possibility of, can we add some bends and meanders back into the creek to help divert some of the energy as it flows into Bredesen Park? You'll see the red, the red lines are where we're going to be using rock veins or the cross veins. The brown lines are using root wads. And there is, of course, with any bank stabilization project, some resloping of the bank, so there will be some soil cut to create a less vertical bank as it goes down to the water's edge. And this, in this case, this is also, we're looking at working with Three Rivers Park District to balance the alignment with the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail with what we're going to be doing for the stream restoration project, so that each of our projects don't, don't hinder the progress of the other one, as well as, you know, utilizing the, the city property in, in the way that's going to be best for both, both projects. This is another section going through Bredesen Park, but we're not doing any re-meandering here. This is essentially taking the great bends that are already in the creek and trying to protect, keep them essentially where they are, protecting some of the trails and the walking paths that are in Bredesen Park from further erosion, and we couldn't design this. Mother Nature's taking care of designing the bends in the creek. We want to help accentuate that, try to keep that as much as we can. So again, using the rock veins and the root wads for the most part. If you look on the, on the bottom part of that, just north of Highway 62, you'll see sort of an orange line. That's where we're going to use riprap. The creek is starting to encroach a little bit closer to Highway 62. We want to make sure that it doesn't come any closer and jeopardize the roadway and the road right away, so there's going to be hard armoring in that case where the, where the creek is flowing along Highway 62. Probably an area that's been both high-profile from the stream project standpoint, as well as the potential for the alignment for the regional trail. This does not show the regional trail alignment at all. This is strictly looking at the potential areas for re-meandering. You can see through, as you move from the number 12 to the, on the west of the map towards the east, north, I, north of West 70th Street, the, we're again using, not doing any re-meandering, has a fairly nice bend. This is all private property. We want to minimize the disturbance to the private property, and so we're going to be using the rock veins and an occasional root wad. It's nicely vegetated right now, so we don't, we want to minimize the disturbance while still providing some protection. As we move further to the, to the east, you can see, and we get into the city property, that's where we want to, we're looking to move that, move the creek channel a little bit to the north. These properties right along West 70th Street, especially on the eastern side, tend to have, the creek is threatening their properties. Sometimes the fence is overhanging, the stream bank, as it goes into the culvert underneath West 70th, there's a significant amount of erosion there. So we want to pull that away from the private properties, create a new meander channel, and then align it so that it's going into the culvert underneath West 70th at a better angle, more of a straight shot rather than doing a quick right or 90-degree turn going into the culvert, causing some backups and erosion that way. And then further down from that, behind the Gramercy Building, very limited space in terms of doing any work, and so we're using those natural approaches to try to keep the creek where it's at, so we're not jeopardizing any of the private property on either side of the, of the creek alignment. So these are the varying techniques that we're going to be using throughout all of the corridor, the reaches that, that we've identified, all 15 reaches. And then just to provide you with a tentative schedule, later this spring, we'll schedule an informational meeting or a series of informational meetings, it's yet to be decided, so that the neighbors and the general public can come and find out a little bit more design detail, which sections that they may live in are going to be impacted and what that may mean. Following that, we'll have a public hearing that will officially order the project. We'll go for bidding this summer with the hopes that come the winter, next winter 2014 going into '15, we'll start the project. Whether or not it's all done in one year or it becomes a multi-winter project depends largely on, you know, the conditions that were given during the winter. If we have good cold frozen conditions like we're experiencing right now, we may get a lot of construction done. We want low-flow, hard soil conditions for construction, for the equipment. It also depends on the magnitude of the project and which reaches we're working on. We may split it up into two, two winter construction seasons, just to allow us a little bit more time and flexibility in case we run into any issues. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bogalke. Member Swenson.
The timing on the bike trail part of it is the east portion has been funded, the west hopefully will be funded the year after. So will you follow that east to west or not necessarily?
No, from the creek standpoint, we'll be probably going upstream to downstream, so we're going to be going west to east.
Okay.
The, we're working very closely with Three Rivers Park District. I know they're moving into design, design phase. We are involved from a regulatory aspect as well, and so they're, you know, meeting with us periodically as they get more information for us to consider and able to provide them feedback. But we're working so that we're, where they're working on the east end is, is further away from this, so we may be able to, where we can coordinate, we will. Where we don't have an opportunity to coordinate from construction season aspect, I think we'll be okay, because we'll be, they're going to be farther enough, far enough away from the stream bank that they shouldn't be disturbing it.
Well, and my assumption is, one, you're going to be doing some work that obviously prepares them to know where the route is that they're on, so, and there might be a more spring, summer, fall schedule, where you tend to be a more winter schedule. Is that correct?
Where that, yeah, I, I think that's probably correct, and, and also looking at where, where there's opportunities to coordinate construction. I don't see it being sort of a joint bidding process, but where there's, where we know that they're going to be working in the same timeframe that we might be working, we're going to target that area so that the equipment's in there at the same time, rather than we're going to be in there for five months and then they come in two months later and end up disturbing that, that area for over a year. We're going to try to, scheduling coordination is definitely going to be taking place.
And this, some of this work look, you know, right behind, just west of Methodist Hospital, a year and a half ago, you did the creek beds right there behind an industrial area through there. Was that an average amount of tear up that you did? Because I've seen what that looks like, and I know what it sounds like.
The, the section in Hopkins you're talking about?
Right behind St. Louis Park Public Works and then a little bit to the west of that.
That probably would have been the Minnehaha Creek Restoration Project.
Okay. And is that a similar kind of a restoration project? So that's the only one I've ever been familiar with as to how it looks and what it sounds like.
That, I mean, you're going to, you're definitely going to be equipment back there. It's going to be backhoes. It's going to be probably, you know, to a certain extent, some, some bobcats and dozers working. We did a, the project that we did is in the city of Hopkins, in the headwaters from Excelsior Avenue South to 169, is in a, a combination of both a heavy industrial area as well as
And a residential, yeah.
multi-use residential. And we were, you know, we were pretty strict on construction hours.
Okay.
They couldn't have, they could not start equipment until 7:00 AM. They had to be done by 5:00, you know, avoiding traffic, unless
Uh, they had to be done by five, you know, avoiding traffic, um, unless absolute dire need. Uh, we really minimized the amount of work on weekends so that when construction was happening is when, you know, most people would be at their own, uh, places of work.
So then, do you have communications with the residents as the project starts and goes on and there's some, someone they can call if they have any questions?
Yeah, and that's what, someone with the, with the informational meetings will have-
Sure.
...information on the scheduling. When it's, when it's ready to go, we'll have information up, we'll work with city staff to help, uh, get communications out, um, and then we also have points of contact.
I mean, I thought it was cool to watch, but only because all the hawks came because the moles were being kicked out of their homes and the hawks were having a feast, but, um, but it, it's pretty fascinating to watch personally, but it's also a little bit loud.
It is.
What's the total project budget?
You know, I don't know. Um, we're, if I recall, when we initially, uh, did the assessment, we were looking in the one and a half to two million dollar range, um, and that largely depends on, um, what the final designs end up being, uh, what we get for, um, for materials costs. Sometimes if, if, uh, if a company has, uh, other projects where they're doing a significant amount of tree removal, then we're able to get like the root wads for, uh, a cheaper cost because they have access to them versus having to go out and buy a hundred and fifty tree, downed trees from someplace. Um, but it really, it really varies. A lot of times if we're able to get far enough out, um, we're able to get a little bit better pricing, uh, with our bidding because then the contractors know they're going to have a amount, a fair amount of winter work going into it and we can get pricing rather than sort of a last minute, oh, we need to pull people back in. Um, and, and they're, they're aware of what their, what their working conditions are. I'm going to guess, uh, we're probably going to be looking in the, probably around the two million dollar range for the whole project.
And which section, which segments do you start on first, the west side or the east side?
Uh, our preference is to start on the west side, going from upstream to downstream. And, uh, some of that will be balanced with coordination of the regional trail. If they're working in areas, um, that we may be, we're going to want to help coordinate that so that we can work simultaneously in a similar area to minimize that, that disturbance rather than, like I said earlier, having us work in one area for a few months and having them come in a few months la, a few months later or vice versa. Our preference though is to go from upstream to downstream.
And where are the, the plan renderings available? Are those on your website?
Right now, they're not available. They're in draft form.
Okay.
Um, I would anticipate later this spring, we'll get, uh, some, you know, near final plans for city staff to review so we can coordinate with park staff as well, uh, engineering staff for a final review and then we'll bring it, uh, to the public, um, before we actually finalize the documents. But those, once we get to that point, they'll be, um, probably available, uh, definitely in our office. They may, depending upon the size of them, they may not be on our website, um, but we'll certainly have it, copies, um, yeah, at the city offices as well as ours for people to view.
After this winter, um, I didn't think I'd be praying for cold winter again, but this makes me think this is the one instance where we might want a cold next year, so.
At least one that, uh, doesn't have a lot of, uh, precipitation, a lot of, lot of freeze thaw sort of conditions where we, where the creek tends to fluctuate. If we get, uh, cold conditions, uh, with a lot of snow, we'll, we'll take that. If we get, uh, colder but drier, drier conditions, that's ideal because the less water we have in the creek, then, uh, the more money we're saving because we don't have to do, uh, any de-watering or, or blocking of the creek or diversions of the creek while we're doing, uh, some of the construction work.
Thank you.
Member Sprague will be out there checking on your work and he won't be wearing a top coat.
No.
He, he just, he'll be showing up just in his suit jacket, so no matter what the temperature.
We'll have lots of observers, so our, uh-
You'll let you know that.
-we make that abundantly clear to our contractors, you're going to have more than us observing your work.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Bogalke? Well, thanks for the update.
Thank you, my pleasure.
This project, uh, you know, as we talked about it over the years, coupled with the, uh, the new recreational trail, is going to be a fantastic combination and a great, uh, amenity for our community, so.
Thank you.
All right, um, we've got one public hearing matter this evening and our interim chief of police, Dave Nelson, has, uh, a request that he wants to bring forward with regard to, um, St. Pat's Church, asking for a temporary intoxicating on-sale liquor license.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, the Church of St. Patrick has applied for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for a special event entitled "A Night at the Opera." Uh, the event will be held onsite in the social hall on February fifteenth from six PM to ten thirty PM. The applicants are eligible for a liquor license and have submitted plans to meet the special requirements of the temporary liquor license under city code. In the past, there have been no problems with prior licenses issued to this facility and they have hired the Edina Police Department for security during the event. I can take any questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions for, for Dave? All right, stand by, David.
All right.
Go ahead and sit down and we're going to open this up for a public hearing. Um, all right, we're going to open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify or inquire regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing from the audience, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the temporary intoxicating on-sale liquor license for Church of St. Patrick for their, uh, "Night at the Opera" event on February fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Further discussion?
Sure.
Member Swenson.
I'd like to welcome Dave Nelson, who's our interim chief of police. This is his first time as interim in front of us, so thank you very much for your report.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. And next, we are going to move into the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council and, um, discuss a matter with the council that wasn't on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter before us there is to approve the joint goals with the Independent School District two seventy-three. Manager Neal, is this one?
Your honor, this, this item is not quite ready for, uh, council action and so we've asked that you postpone it until the next council meeting.
Oh, excuse me, I see that, all right.
Do you need that in a motion?
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to move this to our first meeting in February, on February third, two thousand fourteen. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay.
It'll be February fourth.
No, that's Christmas, sir.
Oh, it is the third. Okay, all right, very good.
All right.
All right, it's a Monday.
Thank you, and, um, next matter, uh, Director Cotry has. We've got one of our local service clubs that is interested in donating a clock, an heirloom clock for Centennial Lakes Park.
Mayor Hubland, members of the council, I am here tonight to recommend the approval of a donation by the Rotary Club of Edina of a Verden Howard replica street clock. And, um, Jennifer, if I can put on the overhead, I have, uh, I have a diagram of what the clock, uh, would look like. The clock is about fifteen feet, six inches tall with a three and a half foot diameter double face. The, uh, the clock would have the Rotary Dial logo with the City of Edina, um, also inscribed. The color of the clock would be black with gold accents and where you see the clock, uh, depicted in this photo is actually the location that staff is recommending for, uh, for the location of the clock. As you can see, it's in front of the Hughes Pavilion at Centennial Lakes Park and I have another diagram here to show you, um, exactly, uh, the location that we're proposing for the clock. There is a plant bed, uh, located there with, uh, a tree that has recently died and there is electrical, uh, already in place, so, um, it seems like a really nice, very visible location for the clock. And, uh, I do have Steve Slice, the president of the Rotary Club of Edina, in the audience today too, if you have any further questions.
Any questions for Director Cotry or Steve Slice? Members Sprague or Member Swenson, go ahead.
Well, I know that there were a couple of locations considered originally and I really like the choice of this location. There's so many people that walk that park and are doing things there and to have a timepiece there, I think is perfect, so I couldn't be happier with the location that was chosen for this, just a comment.
Thank you. Member Sprague.
To, uh, well, you can, either of you can answer this, but I know there's not much mechanical inside, but in terms of long-term maintenance, there's a warranty on the clock and ongoing maintenance if there's something wrong with the insides, correct?
Yes, Member Sprague, there is, and I've actually spoken with the manufacturer of the clock and there really is very little maintenance that's required on the clock. Um, after about ten or fifteen years, they recommend, um, you know, a, a major service on it where they would go through and possibly do a renovation, you know, pull out the insides and replace anything that's needed. Um, if at any point we should decide, we could also take a maintenance contract and have them come out and clean and lube and inspect the clock annually, uh, for the price of about five hundred and fifty dollars. We're not anticipating, especially in the first few years, that, uh, we would require that type of service.
I noticed the company's been in business for a hundred and seventy years, so I think the Rotary Club picked a good manufacturer, over hun, four hundred post clocks around the country.
I, I think we, that number is understated too.
I did a little research today and I-
Mr. S, uh, Mr. President Slice, come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Slice, I'm current president of the Edina Rotary Club and, uh, pleasure to be here. Um, I did a little research and those numbers weren't adding up. It was fifty thousand, uh, clocks approximately around the world, so.
Wow.
They're all hand-built and, um, they're cast aluminum, so, you know, the, the process, you know, the metal used, cast aluminum and the powder coating, uh, should be beautiful for a long time. And I too, um, you know, we were looking at Fiftieth and France as an option at one time and, um, uh, this option came up and it just hit me. It's just, you know, another meeting place. I mean, people meet at the Water Tower at the Southdale parking lot, uh, now they can have another, uh, gathering or meeting place, uh, at Centennial Lakes, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I have, I have a question. Um, there have been in the past requests to have a Rotary this or a Rotary that, um, or a sign in town that says there's a Rotary Club here and we've always gotten the answer no because everybody else is going to want one. And, um, do we, as a city, do we have a policy on something with an insignia like this?
That would be our donation policy, but we didn't pass.
Member Bennett, I'm not sure I would be the best person to answer that question.
I don't, I don't believe that we do.
Okay, all right, just wondered.
Well, we have a donation policy and this is a donation.
That's correct.
We also have been working on a policy and I know it's been a really busy year, but that was one thing that I was hoping to ask about and we were, um, hoping to bring it back, I think with some staff work.
Member Bennett, you will see that on February eighteenth.
Wonderful, thank you.
Other questions for Director Cotry or President Slice?
No, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we've got a, um, an approval necessary on this, item eight B. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Edina Rotary Foundation donation of an heirloom, heirloom clock for Centennial Lakes Park. Uh, further discussion?
Well, um, I'm a Rotarian, um, does that mean I can vote on this or can't vote on this or does it affect my ability to vote on this?
Emin Rotary, so is Member Sprague.
No, there's no conflict on this.
Okay.
As, I just wanted to thank the, uh, both Rotary Club boards. This is just one of the many investments that the local Rotary Clubs make in, in the city. So, thanks for the generous-
Member Brindle, thanks for raising that issue. Um, this is a twenty-five thousand dollar donation, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Thank you. Thanks to your Rotary Club, please. Um, and then, next in line is the Resolution two thousand fourteen dash eleven, accepting various donations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on that. Um, state law requires that we accept these donations through a formal process. Um, any further discussion with regard to this resolution?
Just a special thank you to the, uh, to Dow Chemical Foundation, to the Fire Department for the Fire Department donation of three thousand dollars and then specifically to the Edina Crime Prevention Fund for its donation of fifteen thousand toward K-9 expenses.
All right, good observations. I was going to make those after the motion passed, but nonetheless, they're being made and I think that's appropriate. So, uh, we should probably correct the, uh, resolution that says the heirloom clock is worth twenty-five dollars.
No, I think that's-
Is that something else? Well, that's something else. That's the neighborhood association.
That's Edina neighborhood, yeah.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that catch. All right, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Um, yeah, so, uh, yeah, some terrific gifts from the Edina, um, Crime Prevention Fund that Member Brindle is a member of and we thank the Crime Prevention Fund for their support of our K-9 Corps. And then Dow, uh, Chemical Foundation's been a, a great annual donor to the Fire Department. We thank them for their ongoing support. All right, now, we've got a sketch plan review here for a proposed change on the Taco Bell at thirty-two ten Southdale Circle and Director Teague, you have this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you, is a sketch plan review to, uh, consider, um, an, an application here or, or plans before an application is made for a new Taco Bell. Uh, what the applicant eventually will be seeking is a site plan review with several variances. The property is located east of Southdale, east of York Avenue on Southdale Circle. You see an aerial of the building as it exists today. This building was built in the early seventies as a Zapata Restaurant and was remodeled in the eighties when it was a Zantigo. In nineteen, in the eighties, I believe it was nineteen eighty-five, there were some variances granted for the parking to extend the parking, um, along the side lot line and the variances at that time were to, um, maintain the existing three-foot setback at that, at that time. Uh, it was in the mid-eighties that the, that the drive-through went in. Uh, what the applicant is proposing here is to tear down that existing structure and build a new Taco Bell restaurant. It would be primarily Eiffis, um, with, uh, some brick accents. You see a few renderings of what the building might look like. The, uh, site plan itself is generally similar to what's existing today. They would have a drive-through that would circle around the building. Currently, the menu board faces the single-family homes, uh, to the east in this location here. Uh, there is parking all around the site, but as you see, they're proposing to narrow up the building, which provides additional, um, space for parking along the north lot line. So this parking field that faces the single-family homes would be, um, these parking spaces would be eliminated and they're proposing a row of, uh, evergreen trees in addition to that solid wood fence, uh, that's currently located along the lot line, uh, today. This rendering indicates the required building setback. You can see the front of the building would extend into the required setback, um, so a variance would be required there. Um, this is the landscaping that's proposed, but just to quickly show you the, uh, a comparison table of the required setbacks, you see the eighteen-foot setback that's proposed in the front. The, uh, proposed parking would be at four feet, so a little bit increase of green space, um, compared to what's there today. Uh, when it was reviewed at the Planning Commission, they were, uh, slightly short-parked. They have revised the plans and I'll show you, uh, on the screen in a second. They've reduced the size of the restaurant, the number of seats within the restaurant and they're indicating that they would meet the required parking, um, number of parking stalls required. The city code does require that menu boards and audio systems, uh, may not face, uh, residential property. Again, as I pointed out earlier, the existing, uh, menu board does face, um, that residential area, so they would need a variance. Uh, that was one of the concerns that was raised by the Planning Commission and the applicant has, um, slightly relocated this or at least turned it. This was the rendering of the menu board where it's slightly angled to face the McDonald's to the south. They have re-oriented that, um, to show that, uh, facing directly south to the Mc, to the McDonald's to try to lessen that impact on the residential area again. Um, some additional, um, concerns that were raised by the Planning Commission, uh, one was in regard to pedestrian connections- were raised by the Planning Commission, one was in regard to pedestrian connections. Right now, there's no sidewalks along Southdale Circle, and there is a sidewalk along York, so we talked about requiring the sidewalk here to eventually connect to York Avenue, or the sidewalk along York. So with that, I can stand and answer any questions that you might have. Again, these are, the applicant's just seeking non-binding comments this evening before they make a formal application.
Thanks, Director Teague. Member Brindle has another question for you.
All right, so what you're showing here is different than any drawing we have in the packet.
Correct. These were just submitted today in response to some of the concerns by the Planning Commission.
Okay, because I'm looking at page A6 that tells me there are 16 parking places, and I count 14.
Correct.
So, is this 16 or 17 that are here?
This is 17. They're showing a row of nine along the south lot line, and a row of eight along the north lot line.
All right, so what's different on the south lot line where there used to be 10? What's in the corner? That southeast corner, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like there was no parking space.
Okay.
Located here.
Okay, that, because that was, that was a big discrepancy for me. I was trying to figure out where the 16 parking places were when I could only count 14. So, what else is different in the presentation you are giving us than what we have in our packet?
The sidewalk was added.
Okay.
Along the front here.
All right.
And the menu board has been slightly tilted to face directly to the south.
Yeah, I got the tilt. I got the tilt. It may be even tilted more as I look at it here. Is there a bike rack? That's, that's my standard question. I could stamp it on anything.
They have, doesn't look like they've provided a bike rack on this plan, but that would be something that, that would be required per zoning ordinance and could be-
Good.
Added when they come through next time.
I, I would like it added. I think that would be good. And I'm not gonna, let's see here. Okay, this is not a public hearing. We're just talking about this. All right. Okay, it's parking spaces. So 34 seats in the restaurant, and 17 parking places.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that they've reduced in order to meet the parking requirement. They're saying the restaurant would be 28 seats now, so they've slightly reduced the seating area inside.
Okay, 28 seats. All right, how many staff?
I'll, I'll let the applicant answer that one.
Okay, I'm curious about how many staff, because that affects parking places. So how many employees per shift, and the bike rack somewhere?
I can speak generally. With 28 stalls, the code requirement is one stall per three spaces, so on a maximum shift, they're figuring eight or nine employees.
Okay, all right. Okay, looking at the drive-through. Okay, I see the drive-through has straightened out on the way out where it was kind of curved before. If someone's order isn't ready, where do they go to wait? That, so that's a question that they can answer.
Sure.
Okay, so where do they go to wait, and then in snow plowing, where does the snow go? Because this really uses every square inch they've got with some small setbacks. So, looking at where the snow would go during plowing, and then I noticed on the building, there's a ladder that goes up the side of the building, and what does that access?
That we'd have to ask the applicant then.
Yeah, those are my questions.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Member Sprague?
So, they're proposing a line of spruce, and as I read the minutes, there's another line of trees behind that on the, on the properties, correct? So we've got two lines of trees.
That would be on the residential property.
Right.
The, the fence that's located there now, that's on the lot line.
So you've got the row of spruce they're proposing, and then the deciduous trees on the residential side.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time?
No.
All right. Thank you, Director Teague. Folks, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about your project, and we'll have another segment of our conversation. Please identify yourself and give us your business address.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Barbara Schneider. I'm here on behalf of Border Foods, who is the Taco Bell franchisee for this location. If I could start this evening just to clarify the differences, we have reduced the number of seats from 34 to 28 in the restaurant. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brindle, in, in response to your question, there are typically eight or nine employees on shift. Not all of our employees drive, some bike, so a bike rack is appropriate. Some use public transportation, some are dropped off by parents or friends. Currently, we did, we did miscount on our initial submission to the Planning Commission. I apologize for that. None of us, none of us caught it, and, and we just made a mistake in our original account. But we have gotten to 17 parking places by a reduction in the seats of which a portion of the parking code is based on. Other questions were rows of trees. We would propose a row of spruce trees. There is a fence between the, on the existing property. That would be between the fence, or I'm sorry, the spruce trees fence, and then trees on the residential properties, if you will. Snow, in heavy snow seasons, we do have to cart away our snow. And we're, we have, the, the site hasn't increased in size, so it's, so that's our, our practice that we've been participating in for many years.
Member Swenson?
What is the average size site that you would, if you were looking to build a new Taco Bell?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, probably around 20,000 to 25,000 square feet.
Okay, and what's the size of this site?
This site is, is-
18, 8.
Eight, 18, is that seven? I don't have my cheaters on.
18, 8, 18,800.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So it's an undersized site to rebuild on, correct, according to what you normally would build on?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it's, it's somewhat undersized. Typically, our sites that are located in areas that are well-developed, such as Edina, are smaller than some of our newer sites. Our site size is flexible. Taco Bell has provided us three different style of buildings. This is the smallest building that we have. We are currently operating other locations with this building, and with an approximate size of parking places, or approximate number of parking places that we have. So, we, we do feel that it works.
I, I ask these for a couple of different reasons. One is, there was a question by one of the Planning Commission members, would you have outside seating, and the answer was no, there's no room. So, it just, and, you know, today, the site has no green space. Tomorrow, if you rebuild it, the site will have, for sure, no more green space and no outdoor seating. So it just, even though the building is smaller, it feels like it's getting even more sterile and more paved or concreted over without even any, any outdoor space. So it feels just, it's a tough rebuild for me, but I understand why you want to do it.
I would, I would say that the site will feel different insofar as there will be more vegetation with the trees that are there, with the spruce trees that are there. The sidewalk will be added, which is not green space, but it will provide a, a safe walking place for people that do want to visit it. And she's a rather old facility. I mean, she's well, she's well past her prime, to be kind, and we, and we'd really like to modernize her, and, and I do accept your comment that it's not ideal.
Do you have, excuse me, anyone else, any other councilmembers wish to ask a question or make a comment? Member Brindle?
One other thing, just pondering on what Member Swenson was talking about. It's a smaller building than was there before.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it's 30 square feet smaller.
Okay, and-
Shaped differently.
Shaped differently, and the setbacks are, setbacks are narrow on the sides, on the north and south. So, I guess, I, you might think that there might, with a smaller building and a wider space than you had before, is there room for a couple of tables outside? Can there possibly be room?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we will, we will take a look at that. There is a little bit of topography change as you come from the building down to the street. We have typically tried to move away from outdoor tables, but, but we will go back and take a look at that.
Why do you move away from outdoor tables?
Outside seating counts against whack and sack, which can be very expensive for restaurants. They are sometimes a liability issue, and used, used in about six months out of the year.
Yeah, true. But that's why we have high priority on pedestrian bike racks, because we want to really, really enjoy that time of year when it's here.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one enjoys that time of year more than I do. I, I understand.
Yeah, and, and so what we're really looking at here is a little bit of green space and a lot of hardscape on this piece of property. So, if there's, if there's a way to work in anything that could manage your stormwater, could be permeable and allow the stormwater, instead of running off, to, to soak in, to, to the ground beneath that property, if that's possible, I would highly encourage it.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we'll take a look at that.
Member Sprague?
One good example of a small building with great landscaping and outdoor seating is the new Starbucks down in Centennial Lakes. I don't know if you've seen that, and I know it's a slightly different, different site, but when I envision a rebuild on a smaller lot and a smaller building, that's kind of what I think of. That has a lot more landscaping around the perimeter of the building. The sidewalk has a boulevard, and it, it just, it feels a lot different. And it is in a sea of parking around it, but yet the building feels closer to the vision I have in my head for future development. So, I'm echoing a theme that's, that's down the dais here about trying to find a way to couch the facility, the perimeter, or the, or the front near the sidewalk, with some more greenscape elements, both from a sustainability point of view and an aesthetic. And, and I would, I would take that before the seating, but would prefer both.
Good comment.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I would, if, if having to, if we had to choose, or a person had to choose, I would go with the green and not the outdoor seating.
I'm, I'm sorry?
If a person had to choose, I would go with the green and not the outdoor seating for, for the concerns that you expressed, and for the year-round value. Evergreens are great, but they're chiefly a border. There's a vertical element. It becomes like a softer version of a fence. It, so, just that thought. I do have a couple of questions, and one is, you did point out that you would no longer be seeking a parking variance due to a reduction of seats within the restaurant. Are there any other variances that were listed in the compliance table or in your applicant, your sketch plan, presentation to the park, to the Planning Commission that you would no longer be seeking?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the variances, as I recall them, one was for parking, one was for the front yard setback, and the other was for the parking variance on the south side of the-
North and, north and south. So it was, it was a building setback from the west-
Yes.
From 35 feet required down to 18 feet would be what would be built. Then there were parking lot and drive aisle setbacks, two variances requested on the north and the south, 10 feet required. You're seeking four feet, variance to four feet. East is 20 feet, and you meet that. That's what backs up on the homes or meets those homes. And then the west would be 10 feet. And then the parking stalls, and finally, the menu board and audio systems. And it sounds like while you have changed the angle of that, it still would be located on the side that abuts residential property?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we believe that we've changed the angle sufficiently enough that it, that it does not point at the residences, that it points squarely at McDonald's the way we have, the way we have designed it here. I have a model of that.
Sure. The compliance table reads may not be located on the side of a building. Director Teague, is it the location, or is it the direction of the point?
It's the location, so they would still need, need a variance, but they're trying to, to minimize the impacts, but it would still need a variance, you're correct.
Okay. And then, just so we understand, because we've covered this more with residential property than we have with commercial property, if a building is destroyed, there is a grandfather right to essentially rebuild where that previous building stood, whether it complied with code or not?
That's correct. They'd have a, a year to build back in the exact same footprint.
Okay, but if a, an existing business is rebuilding new on property, and that property is small for what they're seeking to do, there is no right to those variances, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I comment on that sign board?
Member Swenson, go ahead.
The way the picture showed that Director Teague showed is, not only did it point towards McDonald's, but it actually had a slight angle towards, a little bit towards the street, and that would be my preference, not perfectly perpendicular to McDonald's. I, I like that, and I don't know, Carrie, do you have that picture? It's probably from them, but I just want to verify that it does have, it is slightly tweaked towards. No, you had one looking down, so you really could tell where the angle was. Nope. He had an angle down, he had one that, a top, thank you. So it's not, it's not parallel with the building. It's slightly tipped from the building. Do you understand the difference for me?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the change from the Planning Commission to the council, we were able to create a wider radius in the back between the, between the building and the drive-through lane, and that width will allow us, we have a little more room to work with, to angle that board. And I think what you're telling me is that you'd rather have it more angled towards Southdale Circle than McDonald's.
Correct. Correct. I'm okay with it being back there as long as it's angled, because there's a light that comes off of it, and there's a voice that comes out of the loudspeaker, and I would rather that that go towards, more towards the street as possible.
Noted. Noted.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Member Brindle?
Looking at the drawing that we're looking at, it looks to me like the sign board is located on the south side of the building, at the very back end, at the very east end of the south side of the building. Do you see it that way, Carrie?
It looks as though the men, the menu board, yeah, the menu board and the speaker box would- be on the south side of the building. Looks like the speaker box, it's, it's, it's real close.
Okay, so the safest thing to do is still do a variance and, and allow that to exist beyond the east end of the building?
I would see it as a variance, yep.
Is that what you're thinking? Okay, all right. It's my, I guess my, more out of curiosity, curiosity than anything, where does the ladder go? It goes up on the roof. Why do people need to be on the roof?
Mr. Mayor, council members, we have mechanical, mechanical equipment on the roof. We have our air conditioners, we have some vents, that type of thing that needs service.
Okay. So is the ladder there all the time?
Yes, it is.
Huh. I guess I hadn't noticed there were ladders all the time. The style of the building is, it doesn't say Mexican Restaurant to me. It doesn't make me think sombrero and maracas and all of that. And, and I know that you have a corporate standard for buildings, but, but you know, if, if I'm in a car and I'm going to travel around that building, my scenery is brown, 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 brown. And so if there's any relief with some sort of design, it'd be nice. So I'll just put that out there.
Thank you.
Ms. Schneider, you forgot to give us your business address, I think.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Your business address.
Oh, 965 Decatur Avenue, north in Golden Valley, 55427.
Thank you, thank you. You know, here's one thing you might think about, and just a comment first of all. It's a constrained site with the present configuration of your building. Back in that little loop, things need major improvement. There have been folks that have been looking at trying to assemble properties back there to do something significant with that little corner of Edina that butts up against Richfield. It sounds like you're in it for the long run, you want to be there. That's fine. I think the building itself is a dramatic improvement over what you've got there now, and it's, it's helpful. Thank you. Another thing you might consider when you leave here is, you're, you're adequately parked now. But one of the big concerns that folks on the council have, and I think on the planning commission as well, is the lack of green space. You may want to get your parking counts over an average period of time, summer, winter. When I'm over there once in a while, it seems like there aren't that many cars in the lot. Most people are using the drive-through, there might be four to six cars there. You, you might consider, based on your traffic counts, coming back with an idea that creates more green space and less parking with a proof-of-parking agreement in place that would allow you to create more parking, to get your parking right if, if the need arises. But in the meantime, you might be able to come up with some more landscaping that would beautify your site and be allowed by the planning commission and the council, at least, take a look at your traffic counts. I think that's one possible way of potentially creating more green space here when you come back. And I think Member Sprig makes a great point about the, the new Starbucks building. It's, it's a charming little building sitting there right in the middle of a sea of asphalt, so take some lessons from that, I think, and, and beef up the landscaping and, and think about that proof-of-parking arrangement and creating more green space somewhere on the, on the site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's my only comment. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
All right, next matter is the proposed amendment of conditions for approval to build the proof-of-parking plan for the Southdale Medical Building. And...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Director Teague, you want to handle that from your, from a sitting position?
Yes, it'll be easy from here, because they have requested that it be removed from the agenda this evening. They, they...
They want to, they want to table it to a date certain, or?
Not a date certain. They're now contemplating maybe some bigger changes that would require them to go back to planning commission. But don't know anything certain at this time, so they're just requesting that it be removed from the agenda.
So can we pitch the plans, because they're going to come back with something different?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. All right, correspondence and petitions, anything that we need to be mindful of other than what we've seen on the dais this evening?
No.
All right. And then aviation noise update, Member Bennett and Manager Neil.
Thank you. January is one of those months in which the Noise Oversight Committee, which meets every other month, and a public input meeting, which is held quarterly, occur in the same month. So there was a Noise Oversight Committee meeting last Wednesday that was fairly sparsely attended. There was a presentation by the FAA on what, what factors go into the choice of runways. And the chief takeaway from that presentation is that safety trumps all. And certainly wind direction is important, but it always refers back to safety. There was also a, a look into what they call a crossing in the corridor, or these are uses of the twelve runway departures. And there were, they determined by looking at the same kind of data that was looked at for elevations over west Minneapolis and Edina, that the measures that were put in place are chiefly working and it's keeping planes where they want them, and there are a few planes going out. So those were the two presentations made at that meeting. The topics that will be covered, so this is the third slide, the notice of the public input meeting is the second slide, I'm sorry to go back. So the public input meeting coming up Tuesday, January 28th at 7:00 PM, and we'll go back to the previous slide in just a minute, but the topics that will be covered at this public input meeting include some of the topics that were covered at that January Noise Oversight Committee meeting. It includes operations, Noise Oversight Committee actions and discussions during recent meetings, an overview of fleet mix trends at MSP, a summary of the 2014 Noise Oversight Committee work plan, and meeting dates, and an introduction to the new MAC NOISE website video library. There is actually, actually a video that shows you how to use the website, and they're going to be developing more. Then if we go back to the previous slide, that gives the time, date, the location, the MAC general offices, 28th Avenue South, this is south of Crosstown 62 before it gets to Hiawatha. And then going forward, we have the contact information. Lisa Palin is our MAC commissioner, we are part of District C, it also includes Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, part of southwest Minneapolis and Richfield. And she continues to urge Edina residents to contact her at this information, at the contact addresses given. And then finally, last slide is our elected representatives at a state and federal level, state level interacts and controls, funds the activities of the Metropolitan Airport Commission, or regulates, that is a self-funding body, and Congress funds the FAA. Thank you.
Good. Manager Neil, anything?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Oh, and I have one brief. Manager Neil, Member Swenson and I will be meeting with a member of NOISE, this national policymaking body, and she promises to give us an update that both Members Swenson and I had been looking for in Seattle, on exactly where in the country RNAV has been implemented, and with what kind of conditions or restrictions. In other words, how many tracks, how are those tracks regulated or used? So we will be getting that information next week.
Good, thank you. All right.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah. Members Sprig?
This is to Manager Neil. So Delta purchased 10727s, and they're mixing up their fleet mix of old and new, and eventually replacing the regional jets, the DC9s and so on. Has anyone spoken to their staff about the timing of the, the fleet mix changes and how that might impact operations at MSP?
I'll speak for myself, I don't know that anyone here has. I know that in the fall of 2013, Mayor Hovland and I had, did have a meeting with the, the Delta exec who was in charge of Delta operations at MSP. That person has since moved on to Atlanta and offices there. He's somebody who'd lived in Edina for twenty-some years, so we do have a connection. We haven't talked to him yet, but we can and, and ought to, to find out what kind of impact that's going to have.
That'd be a good question.
Could be a positive one.
Thank you.
Yep, good. All right, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Members Sprig?
Thank you. So I'm going to continue on a topic I brought up last council meeting, which is an allocation from our surplus 2013 of $10,000 to seed the Music in the Parks series. And in the interim, I talked to some Arts and Culture Commission members, and I had a sidebar conversation with Manager Neil. And we think there, there, it would also be a good practice to consider setting up a separate segregated fund for arts and culture. And the way it would work with this allocation is, we'd allocate the money to Music in the Parks, they'd hold their festival, and any revenues would come back into this fund for future use by the Arts and Culture Commission, depending on what their recommendation would be. So I'm going to let Manager Neil talk about the separate fund, but to you, I still would like to, to have you consider making this allocation early so that Paul Peterson can get onboard booking acts for this Music in the Parks series. Time is of the essence, I guess, is what I want to communicate to my colleagues. The other thing is, I was at a, where did I pick this up? I was somewhere with my children, I lose track of all the places we go. And, oh, it was at Hatrick in St. Louis Park, of course, hockey. And I picked up this Discover, Discover St. Louis Park Official 2013 Visitor and Living Guide. It's a really nice piece of literature. It captures all the things that the city does. There's references to private establishments that, that do various things, there's an event calendar. And I, I think, I like that they are intentional about messaging to, to people who are considering choosing their, their town. So I'm going to pass it down to our communications and technology director and Manager Neil for future consideration. That's all I got. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
So we're waiting till Manager Neil has a chance to talk to further discuss the Arts and Culture Fund?
Okay. We could do it now, or we could wait till he makes his comments?
I can wait, I certainly want to hear his comments, so...
I was going to talk about that under my comments.
Fine, I'll wait. I brought up at an earlier meeting an interesting article that was in today's Star Tribune paper, and it started on the front page discussing rebuilding a city and Minneapolis seeks more residents looking to limit parking spots. But then if you turn to the second page, it talked about areas of, that it had worked in where one, where it hadn't, which was the Red Cow Restaurant on 50th and France and the old Blockbuster, where they allowed them to build a restaurant that only had ten parking spaces. Interestingly enough, the neighborhoods sought permission for permit-only parking, got it, but have now lost in court because the restaurant owner sued the city, saying that was unfair. So it's temporarily halted the permit parking. But the most interesting thing was that the city noted that non-permit parking is available merely a block away. That's okay, that's in Minneapolis, paid for by the Minneapolis businesses. But then they mentioned the hundreds of spaces in the public ramps just over two blocks away, which I find rather ironic, since those are parking spaces built by the city of Edina and maintained by the businesses and taxpayers on the Edina side. And when the mayor and I met with RT, and now current Mayor Hodges, to try to get some sort of taxing districts so we could really benefit parking for everybody on that side and our side, we didn't have any success in moving forward with that. So I, I find it odd that Minneapolis looks at our parking as available. So, and I don't mean that in a negative way for, for people shopping up there. Certainly if you're going to shop at Anthropologie or some other store across the street and you park in our ramp and then you eat lunch at Salute, that's, you know, you're parking, you're parking in the district and you don't really think I'm crossing over to the Minneapolis side. And that's fine, but I just, I don't see our ramps as a solution for everything that they build within two, three blocks on Minneapolis. I'll get off my soapbox, thank you.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Nothing to add this evening, just air noise meetings.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
I have, what do I have? Three things, maybe. On Saturday, I attended a focus group moderated by Alina Health for Somali residents, and this was the sixth of a series of focus groups. And the purpose for the focus groups is really to talk about what's different between the United States and Somalia. Certainly there's a ton different, because in Somalia, it's generally 75 degrees, they can go outside, they can do whatever they want, and that's what it is all year long. They are a nomadic community, so they're always moving. They walk about 15 miles a day. And for water, for food, or just wherever they're, they're going, they move all the time. And the difference with life here, I guess I'll, I'll preface that by saying what brought them here was Seagate. There, there's a segment of their population that decided they wanted to be here, and this is not a, a population that, that we see on the poverty rolls at all. This is a, this is a, a population that really knows what they want, and they go after what they want. And, and the, the challenge that they're finding is diabetes. They aren't walking 15 miles a day. The men find it much easier to work out at the, at the Y or the clubs around town. The women don't find it easy at all, because culturally, they need privacy, they need private space to work out. And so they're looking at, looking at the, the fact that in that population, there's, diabetes is just exploding. So that's part of what Alina Health and Blue Cross Blue Shield Prevention is really focusing on in these groups, is to, is to hear the comparisons of lifestyles, to hear what, what culturally, what the challenges are that prevent them from seeking a place to work out, from understanding the differences in lifestyle and how that could contribute to a change in health. Because what they, what they tend to think is that I'm healthy in Somalia, and when I come to America, I am sick. But they don't see why. And so, so these focus groups have been with men, with women, and with children. And, and it's interesting, I mean, honestly, I mean, other than the introductions, everything was in Somali. So I really have no idea, other than the periodic word of agriculture, or periodically there will be an English word in among all of what is stated. But they like sweet. They like sweet. And so sweet tea, they'll drink a cup of tea and put a quarter cup of sugar in it. And, and so I think the education that can be had there is, you can have sweet, but it can be honey, and you can be much better off. Half the honey for what you need sugar for will give you the sweetness that you're after. But, but anyway, that was, there's certainly more to learn in that, but I'm very intrigued, and I am very, I appreciate all the time and effort on the part of Alina and Blue Cross to hold those sessions. Last time I talked about there needing to be a stationary bicycle for any Edina resident, we found one, Second Wind Exercise donated it. And so Ralph and I went and picked it up, and we delivered it, and we had a perfectly delightful visit with these residents on West 61st Street. So a huge thank you goes out to Second Wind. They're, they're a fabulous partner, I mean, just amazing. Now that they've done that, of course, we're going to go to them more and more and say hello. But nonetheless, they are in the community and, and they understand the role of a community member. So that's, that's much appreciated. We had our meeting, the Southwest Beyond the Yellow Ribbon had our meeting... We had our meeting. The Southwest Beyond the Yellow Ribbon had our meeting on January 16th. And our speaker that evening was ESGR, Employer Support for Garden Reserve. This group is a part of Department of Defense. They work with military persons, helping them search for a job, be ready to search for a job and build a resume. They also work with employers so that they understand how to support an individual before, during, and after deployment. And then lastly, I-494 Commission. Mayor, you might have this on your list as well. Friday, this Friday, January 24th at 8:30, there's a meeting at the Minnetoka Community Center. And Mindot Commissioner Charles Zelli will be the speaker, talking about a variety of transportation issues and projects around the state. And then Will Schroer.
Schroer.
Schroer?
Schroer.
Excellent. Thank you. Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce will speak about return on investments in the transit system. And I think that's the message we all need to understand because somehow there is funding needed for transit, for bridges, for all sorts of things. And the top four projects listed to be talked about, the I-494 35W interchange, that's a big one. And then, and how far reaching that is north and south. Does it go all the way to 66th? Does it go all the way to 82nd? And how all that works. Southwest Quarter LRT, Bus Rapid Transit, there's lots of growth in that area. And then TED Projects, Transportation Economic Development Projects. So there you go.
Good. Thank you. Lot to report out on for folks. Since we met two weeks ago, I attended on the 9th of January, the Southwest LRT Public Comment Meeting over in St. Louis Park at their rec center there. Member Bennett was there. Yep, we saw each other over there. Probably 300 people in there, I'd say.
Easily. It's packed.
And I think it was a good venue for people to make comments. There were a lot of different opinions with regard to the project. One common thread that I discerned was that no one, no matter where they were from, seemed to like the idea that freight reroute through St. Louis Park with the proposed plan. Beyond that, there were a lot of other varied comments about the project. On the 13th, which was Monday, we had a combined meeting between the Regional Council of Mayors and the Urban Land Institute Board. And we had our own Bill Melton there, who was on the State Board of Economic Advisers and the retired chief economist for American Express, gave an economic update both for the country and for the, in particular, the state. And actually then ran a comparative with Wisconsin. If anybody happened to see a few months ago, there was, there was an article written for the New York Times by Larry Jacobs over at the university about comparing Wisconsin and Minnesota. And said he didn't have any underlying data, but didn't stop him from writing an article for the New York Times. And maybe when you get a chance to write an article for the New York Times, you know, it's okay if you don't have any data. But Melton was actually very interesting in searching out why we have been more successful in terms of our economic recovery and our output than Wisconsin, which we are very comparable to. And it all boils down to a lack of funding commitment to education. And the difference in the number of people achieving a bachelor's degree here compared to Wisconsin, there's a real, real significant difference from a percentage standpoint. And that's not a short-term fix. You know, that's a long-term fix and it reflects some, some long-term lack of funding. And so it tells us we need to keep making those educational funding commitments that we, to keep us on top in the upper Midwest and make sure we give our kids the best chance we can give them. And it's going to help us in the long run too, making, building a stronger economy. So it was an interesting report from Bill. And then, let's see, on the 15th, Members Swenson and I met with Jack Rice and Jim Nelson from the Housing Foundation to talk a little bit about affordable housing and what might possibly be done in our community. Had a TAB meeting that day as well. And then on the, on the 17th, which was Friday night, the Energy and Environment Commission had the first in a series of films that they showed here at the, in council chambers. It was fairly full and it was called Chasing Ice, as Member Swenson says. It's a documentary about the receding glaciers. This fellow put up cameras in Iceland, Greenland, and Alaska and with time-lapse photography, looked at the deflation or receding of these glaciers over about a three-year period of time. And it's significant. It's significant. And so the point being that these glaciers are kind of the Canarian Coal Mine. And we need to be mindful of what's happening. There were about four out of 3,000 glaciers that actually increased in size, but a tremendous number lost completely and most every other glacier diminished except for those four. So I think it's, again, speaking to this, this carbon issue that we have. We're pumping too much carbon into the atmosphere. We need to figure out what we're going to do about that. And as a community, we need to continue to work on it. And I think our Energy and Environment Commission will try to do what they can there. So let's see, then on the 18th was Walk with the Mayor. I had one person show up off of our, Arnie Bigby from our Boards and Commissions, who is on the Human Rights and Relations Commissions. We had to talk about a few issues that they're working on. And then on the 20th, Manager Neil and I met with the, with the Core Committee from 50th and France regarding parking, all those things went through on the consent agenda tonight. A couple of, just a couple of quick comments. They were wondering if, as we work, go to work on this, if there are some things that could be accelerated, one of which was, I think, something for the council to think about. We don't have to act on it in the short term, but wayfinding. Could we start working on that wayfinding strategy in advance of the main project taking place? So that's something for folks to think about, whether or not we want to kind of accelerate that part of it. Member Bennett.
Mayor, that would be funded out of HRA funds, not out of assessments because anything tied to the assessment hearing would have to wait until after that.
That's correct. And then, just a kind of a shout-out from that whole group for the work that Bill Nuenendorf has done with them and for the consultant, the engineer that's working for Kim Lee Horn. Both of those folks got high praise from that committee that's working down there at 50th and France. So that's it for me. Oh, one other thing, I launched on the 20th then with Lori Severson from the chamber and Richard Leiter, if you remember him.
Yes.
And, and there's an idea being bandied about now about, he's working on a project called Life Reimagined. And he's working with AARP and maybe starting something with the National Football League. But they want to do a pilot on Life Reimagined. No one knows exactly what that means yet. But Edina is surfacing as a possible community where we could, we could experiment with what Life Reimagined means. So that folks aren't on that traditional cycle of, you know, from birth to death with college and family and, and working hard and then retiring and sliding down on that traditional curve. You know, you get to that point where you're ready to retire and you notch over and then you move up in a different direction. So we'll learn more about that from him. He was off to Tanzania, I think, Thursday. And then when he gets back, we'll talk to him some more about this potential work with AARP on this project. Member Swenson.
I forgot to ask Director Teague one question to look into. I don't need an answer tonight. But Member Brendel and I attended a meeting with Scott Tankenoff and there was some comment about Burgundy Place being underparked with its current now new uses. And they're working it out. So, but my question to you, do I not remember a proof of parking along the north wall that we did kind of a combination of grass with maybe pavers or something so that fire could go in there, but that it was also an area that could be used for parking? Do we have a proof of parking on Burgundy Place?
Councilmember Swenson, we do have a proof of parking and they are going to be putting in all of those spaces to accommodate.
Apparently, they're short even with those spaces. So we have called the proof of parking on them? Or they've called it on themselves, whatever order that went in, and they're maximizing their parking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I'm sorry. Forgot to ask you that earlier.
Good. You just reminded me of one other thing. I had a meeting last week with Bill Blazer from the State Chamber. He called me and he's got a, there's a business down in Bloomington that's looking to relocate its corporate headquarters. They wanted to have a quick meeting. And so I passed that information on to Bill Nuenendorf and we'll start to work with that company on possible relocation of their corporate headquarters, which is actually going away due to the runway 17. Isn't that runway 17, the north-south runway?
North-south on an angle.
Yeah. So, anyway. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a number of things. First thing I want to start out with though is just to follow up on the item that Councilmember Sprague brought to us, the Discover St. Louis Park item. I think it's good for you to know that that item is not, that, that, that piece of literature is not produced by the city of St. Louis Park. It's produced by something called Discover St. Louis Park, which is their destination marketing organization that is funded through their lodging tax. And the reason it's important for you to know that is that our Chamber of Commerce is considering, has been discussing and considering coming to the city with a discussion about a lodging tax here. So there's, there's some discussions they're doing with the hotel community in town. They want to touch those bases and make sure they're communicating with them. But, but that is being discussed in Edina and for it to happen, it must have the approval of the city council. So that could be something coming your way. And that kind of, of literature, also a beautiful website that they have and also other kinds of promotions. They do some staff support. So that's a nice, nice thing to see. We will give you an update on the discussion that we're having with the Minneapolis, excuse me, with the city of St. Louis Park on the Minneapolis Water Works site at the meeting on Monday, February 3rd. And just to note that our next meeting is Monday, February 3rd. Usually on Tuesdays, but that is caucus night, I believe. A question about golf and process. We have scheduled the public input meeting on the proposed golf improvement plan, I think that's what we're going to call it, for Thursday, January 30th at 7:00 PM at Bramar Clubhouse.
What is it? Wait a minute, wait a minute, go back. What are we doing?
We're going to make a presentation to the community and to the golfing community about a plan to, to improve the financial self-sufficiency of our golf enterprise. It won't be that wordy when we talk about it, but, but that's essentially what it is. It's something we've talked about here before. Question has come up about public hearings and about whether the council, the process we had initially looked at, had a public meeting on the 30th of January, had a consideration at the Park Board for a review and comment, and then come to the council with a presentation and a possible action on March 4th. Do you want to have a public hearing at the Park Board and the council? Do you want to have, not have a public hearing, a formal public hearing at either of those? At just one of those? Do you have any preference along those lines? It's, it would be good for us to know that now so that we can set expectations.
What would be the action sought, the purpose of the public hearing, in other words?
The, the purpose of the public hearing would be to provide an opportunity for people concerned on this issue who are perhaps not supportive of staff recommendation or direction to come to council and share their thoughts with you directly in a public setting.
But I guess I'm asking about the council decisions and the timeline of those decisions.
Be no legal requirement for you to do it?
And in terms of the council decisions, is council going to be asked to implement staff recommendations in the upcoming budget cycle? Or what is the timeline of that action?
Yes. We would, I believe that our request to you is going to be to approve a package of, of decisions that would be approved in 2014 and implemented in 2015. But I think it's important to do that early in 2014 so that we can begin to make other, other plans and so that people have plenty of time to react to those decisions.
And so there is some specificity then in what's being recommended in terms of budget, in terms of what's open, what's closed?
Yep, yes, there will be.
Changes, possible capital improvements?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would, go ahead, Mary.
And the discussion on this is regarding all of the golf course operations or just Bramar?
All of our golf course operations.
You know, sometimes these, you go by a sense of feel. It's more subjective than objective. But it feels to me like we ought to have two public hearings or at least have, start with one at the Park Board and let them take testimony from people that are going to be interested. What?
That wouldn't be a public hearing necessarily. I mean, they could.
They could take public testimony.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm using that term in a broad sense. You know, they're not, they're not, they're going to make an advisory decision and recommend something to us. But I think they should take public testimony at the Park Board. And then I think we should plan on having a public hearing as well. This is an important consideration here. The possibility that the Fred could have a future as a park and not as a golf course is going to be something people want to weigh in on, I think.
I support that and an open public comment period, which we always have. Even when a public hearing is closed, we continue to take information. I think that the specificity of the information that's provided by staff and the idea that there would be some kind of public input or an open house or some kind of meeting where people could, if there are visuals, that people could get up close and informed about them, whether it's held at Bramar Clubhouse, that's probably the most logical location for it. And then schedule the public testimony before the Park Board and the city council public hearing, an interval after that so people have had time to learn about and process information.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do.
Folks are comfortable with that from a process standpoint? Good. We. Director Bennett.
Would you like to have the Park Board meeting televised as a result?
I think that's a, that's a good thought. I was even thinking about the possibility somewhere in the process of an open house here or at Bramar with drawings. I mean, some people are going to want to know, well, what would, what would there be at the Fred if there wasn't a golf course? What would it look like? Would it, you know, beyond the regional trail?
Is that what we're doing or are we doing what?
We won't be ready for anything close to that.
It'll be.
We should do that, but that's a different timeline.
But it could be what, what golf course changes for the leagues if they were to move over. Would that be a part of the visual package?
I'm not sure if I know what a visual package is on that issue.
I'm not sure I know either, but.
But what we would say to those leagues is we would, are likely to present to them and ask them, what, what do you need or what would you like to see? What would help you transition? It would be that sort of thing. If, if we're going to have a park planning process, if we do go that direction with Fred Richards, there would certainly be a separate and probably elaborate process of landscape architecture and boards and so forth.
Yeah, good point.
So that's more appropriate for an open house format. For this, for this decision, it could be two public hearings and that would suffice for the type of decision being made.
But if there are physical changes, for instance, that we know are going to be made at Bramar and there can be some representation of those, I think that would be helpful for people in terms of understanding what is being proposed.
We can describe them for sure.
Well, how about the, you know, how about the regional trail? I mean, if there, if there, if Free Rivers is far along in its process, is there, is it premature?
Yeah, premature. Yeah, premature. I mean, we would, we know enough to say that there will be a regional trail from here to here, but we don't know whether it's on the north edge of the Fred, or south edge, or through the middle. That part of the planning process is not accrued yet.
Okay.
Because they're waiting on us.
Partially, yeah.
Member Brendel.
There is an item that Josh brought up, which is music in the park.
I'm just, that was, that's the next thing.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Mary, it's really good to keep him on task. Keep going, Mary.
I'm looking at the clock.
All right, I'm doing my job.
All right. So, what I'm putting in front of you tonight is a proposal, and it comes out of a discussion that I had with Councilmember Sprague about this, about his proposal to provide some funding for a particular arts and culture programming use. We considered providing, we considered that proposal when we put together our budget proposal for you, but did not include it in the staff proposals budget, because we did not include a number of program expansions in the budget this year, so that was part of that group. However, there is some interest in, I know from Councilmember Sprague and maybe others, to provide some kind of funding to this particular music program. But what you're looking at here is a way that I think is probably a longer-term approach to arts and culture programming, and that is to set up a dedicated fund that you could put budget allocations into that commissioners could dedicate their own kind of fundraising into that would come through our normal gift-receiving and approving process. And also, if there is a gate to any of these, if there's gate revenue or sponsorship revenue related to these, we could also put that money into this programming fund. We have had a couple of commissions that do have small budgets that they do programming fund. E E C is one, and H R R C is another. This is setting up something very similar along the lines of arts and cultural programming. And it provides the Arts and Culture Commission some greater discretion to provide that kind of programming, and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to come out of the elected government world.
We already have.
We already have this functioning for public art. Because we give that to them solely for that, and actually, when we did the fundraising for Spalding, the extra money stayed with public art, though I did notice there was a discussion within this commission as to whether it should just stay with public art, or whether it should be taken back into this commission to be used for other things. So, there is a little confusion, and would this clear that up?
It would, and it should, and it would.
It also puts an onus on them to make their decisions. It gives them some independence to decide how to allocate to this broader idea of funding the arts, as opposed to.
I've been deciding, trying to decide whether using the National Endowment for the Arts as a good model or not, but in some ways, this is a small, very modest version of that, where folks who are elected by the people can, are allocating revenue, money, into a fund that is then reallocated by the arts community.
So, it's village endowment for the arts?
Or city endowment for the arts. I like this. I like the outline of it. I think there will be some things that'll need to be filled in, such as Member Swenson has just described. There will be some rules and policies, but the idea that there would be some sustainability of it. And we've recognized the importance of public art to the community before, for years now. And this recognizes the importance of other arts as well, and does encourage some self-sustaining. And I think it's a great start.
Member Brendel.
The question I have is, the Public Art Designated Fund is part of the foundation, isn't it? Edina Foundation?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Is it part of the city?
We make an ad hoc allocation.
When we make, when we make an allocation.
Because there is a fund at the Edina Foundation.
Well, that was a vehicle for giving money, for us, for Spalding, I know. They used that as a vehicle, but then it went back to the city.
Well, the donations, as I understand it, are tax-deductible. The only difference is the anonymity of the donor, if the donor wishes to have a screen. And I don't know that anything would stand in the way of an individual donor using the foundation if they want anonymity, and then the donation could be passed on to this art fund. But from the check register, we can see that there are, in fact, payments that go directly to artists, stipends, and the rest.
Right. And we can't offer the anonymity like the foundation can.
So, this, till mid-year, if they had additional money they hadn't spent, and they needed to make an allocation, they could just send a funding request up to us, as opposed to waiting till the next budget year, because they'd have money in their fund?
Right. Depending on how they would structure the timeline of, I would imagine they would create a process where they receive proposals and allocate funds, just like the Rotary Club does, or just like other kind of funding entities.
Just gives them a little more flexibility.
To me, this begs a little bit broader question, and it's been roiling around. Came up with Member Swenson, and I met with folks from the Housing Foundation. But it's come up in the form of public art, too, with the person who's head of the Public Art Committee sending a model ordinance where some communities collect 1% of building permit revenue off commercial buildings for public art. Well, that could be something that we think about on a longer-term basis. I think in our community, we collect about $3 million a year in building permit revenue from all sources. I'm not sure what percentage of that is commercial, but it might be a way of generating $10,000, $15,000 a year. And then, you know, we also face this issue with affordable housing. We talk about it. We talk to developers about it. We understand and appreciate the difficulties that they have. Every other community that engages in some form of workforce housing has some skin in the game themselves, and so, what would be the potential source of that revenue that we would have in the game? It seems to me like that could also be something that would come from a building permit revenue on multifamily dwellings, for example, that, maybe, as Manager Neil and I talked about it, variation of the park dedication fee, where you'd pay so much per unit, or you would create a certain number of units that were affordable. And then, we would put the money into a housing fund that we would use at our discretion.
The sack whack and a whiff. Workforce, never mind. But we do actually have the roundup of the water bill currently that adds funding to the art center, correct? It was originally to pay off the stained glass, which it probably is still paying.
It is still paying off.
Off the stained glass, okay.
Don't have a sense of how much it is.
I want to say about $1,000 a year. It's not a roundup program, though. A resident or property owner selects a specific amount that's added.
Oh, it's like the little loon box on the state tax thing, okay. Well, then, I'm gonna move that we put $10,000 into the whatever endowment fund for the arts to start the music part of that Arts and Culture Commission moving forward this year.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Very good. Manager Neil.
I'm gonna quit while I'm ahead.
All right. Anyone else on council?
I didn't think it was good.
Staff, anything else? All right, we stand adjourned.